I call this meeting of the Huron School Board to order, ask the business manager to note the roll call, and ask everybody rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, the first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda, are there any additions or corrections on the agenda?
Move adoption.
Second. There's a motion and a second to adopt the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, motion carries. Four hour dates to remember, from June 6th through June 30th, we have the ESL summer program running Monday through Thursday from 8 to 1:00 PM. For those same dates, June 6th through June 30th, we have the summer nutrition program at the Huron Middle School with breakfast running from 7:40 to 8:10, and lunch running from 10:45 to 12:45. Breakfast is Monday through Thursday only, lunch is every day Monday through Friday. From July 1 to August 5th, we have the summer lunch program at the Huron Middle School, lunch runs from 11:45 to 12:45, Monday through Friday, there's no breakfast during that period of time at the middle school. At the Washington 405 Center, there's also a meal program from June 6th through June 30th only, we have the breakfast program from 7:35 to 8:05, Monday through Thursday, and the lunch program from 11:45 to 12:30, also Monday through Thursday. Then on June 27th, we have the next regular school board meeting at 5:30 PM here at the instructional planning center in the arena with a goal setting session at 6:30. That is it for the dates to remember. Now turn to community input for items not on the agenda, is there anybody present for community input? Seeing none, we'll move forward with the consent agenda. The superintendent of schools recommends approval of the following, the approval of the minutes of previous meetings, consideration and approval of bills, approval of the financial report, we have board approval of new hires, we have Cody Kaufman as a ninth grade boys' basketball coach, Drew Strand as an assistant varsity football coach, and assistant middle school wrestling coach. We have Chris Rozell as an eighth grade girls' basketball coach, Michael Schmitz as a winter strength and conditioning coach, and Erin Melson, eighth grade girls' basketball. We have some contracts for board approval, Miranda Matkey, a language arts teacher at the middle school, Jolene Knitschke, assistant principal at the Huron High School, and director of CTE and alternative education, Tanya Lambert, special education behavior teacher, and Raleigh Larson as a school nurse at the middle school and at Washington. We have some resignations for board approval, Janelle Tolzma as an eighth grade girls' volleyball coach, Maria Whiff as a title para educator at Madison, Drew Strand as a sped paraprofessional, Chris Rozell as a JV girls' basketball assistant coach, and Rory Reed as a computer support Then item G is ratification of the classified salary negotiations. H, declare old marching band equipment surplus property and trade in for $1,100 credit. Item I on the consent agenda is a request for open enrollment, we have two requests, OE 2016-01 and 2016-02 for board approval. Item J, request for approval of a three-year yearbook agreement with Justin's at the Huron High School. And item K, a request for approval to hold the school's surplus property auction on Thursday, July 14th at 5:30 PM at the transportation building. The auction will be conducted by Ace Realty Auction. That is the consent agenda, if anybody has any questions or wishes to pull any item off the agenda, you're free to do so, or we can adopt it all in one motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that you pull the ratification of the classified salary negotiations out of the consent, move it to new business, please.
Who would do that then? Doesn't even need a second, but it's good to have it that he's pulling from the agenda, from the consent agenda. Item G, ratification of classified salary negotiations, that will then get moved to new business, or let me get old business, item D. Okay, anybody have anything else regarding the consent agenda?
I would make a motion to adopt the rest of the consent agenda.
Second.
Now, there's a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda, not including item G, all in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, that motion carries. We now turn to celebrate successes in the district, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Nebelsek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, congratulations goes out to Washington Elementary 405 Center. Washington achieved the 2016 Bronze National Health School Awards for Alliance for a Healthier Generation. Congratulations to Sarah Skorhein, Sarah placed 10th at the EST Golf Meet All Conference and 21st at the State Golf Meet to earn all state honors, a great finish to a fine senior. Congratulations to following students who placed at the State Track Meet in the field events, Shannon Kots was second in the pole vault, Katie Schoenfelder, seventh in the discus, Trent Frankham, fourth in the pole vault, Travis Kleinsauser, sixth in the pole vault, Carl Cole Corko, seventh in the long jump. And congratulations to Landon Clays and Henry Rubish, Landon and Henry placed seventh in doubles at the State Tennis Meet. And thank you, I'll probably say it again during the superintendent's report, but board members, you've had a long day at your own jobs, and the administrative staff has been here early in the day getting their buildings going, and then met all day with the data retreat training, so by the time all of you are finished tonight, you'll put in a long day, and I'm thanking you in advance for that. Back to you.
Thank you, we now move to reports to the board, the first is an update on Huron's professional development, to be given by Gaye Pickner.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak today concerning Huron's professional development. And we'll tell you as Mr. ...
Is that better? Got it. As Mr. Nebelsek said earlier, our staff spent a good portion of the day over at the high school with NWEA data, smarter balance data, looking at perception data, so I was sitting at one table and they said that was probably one of the best professional development days, just looking, having time to look at that data, and I will have to agree with them. So what I'm going to do is just give you an update of what we have been doing since my last presentation. In December, the elementary, they worked on their curriculum maps, we have hired with some title funds, a math instructional coach, so once a month, the math instructional people at each school district, or each building, elementary and middle school worked with this instructional coach, and then they also worked on power standards. At the middle school, they worked on priority standards, and they also worked on the standards based grading. And at the high school, they looked at NWEA data, again, technology and PSYOP. And you'll see a theme throughout this presentation with these different topics. So, in December, our people thought that 75% of the in-service was, you know, helping them in their areas of their teaching assignment, and was this beneficial? And a little over 80% said yes, this in-service in December at their building was very beneficial. And does it make their teachers aware of what they teach? And not quite, 69% of the staff said yes, that this in-service made them better aware of what they taught. In January, at the elementary, they talked about curriculum again in reading, math, and writing, they also discussed technology and iPads throughout their buildings at the elementary. Middle school, again, discussed iPads, since especially the eighth graders, that's where they are working, and then down to seventh and sixth grade. And then the high school, again, they had PSYOP instruction, they had homeroom meetings, and they also talked about iPads. And in January, the theme there was technology. And at our January in-service, 77% said that it increased their area and their teaching assignment, was this beneficial? And, you know, that was quite high also, and did it make them aware of what they taught in their area? And they also, that was quite high, over 80%. And some of the comments that they had there, in the elementary, they improved their student writing, it was just a reflection on what their students, they were better able to utilize iPads, you know, in purchasing what apps, I think Roger came over and visited with a couple of the sites there, and then they also, it just helped them improve their planning instruction. And then just questioning, they gave them an opportunity to look at questions and some different strategies around questioning. At the middle school, since theirs was guided around technology, there were a couple different apps that they discussed, they had QR codes and quizzes, and then this goose chase I had, it's a hunt, that the math students could look at, and it was a hands-on activity, and that student engagement is really important there. And at the high school, they love their PSYOP coaches, they love when they give them ideas, so, you know, that's very important, and also, they talked about this quizzes activity for their iPads, and being able to use that in their classrooms. The February, at the elementary, NWA, NWA, NWA at all three levels there, my next report will be on NWEA, and so it's very important that we give the opportunity to our staff to look at the data, and so we try to match it up every time that the, after the test that next month, we give the teachers ample time to look at that, to drive instruction. And there's a little matrix on how they did, again, a good part of the teacher said that it increased their knowledge in the area that they were teaching, and it was definitely well over, you know, almost, it was 87% said it was beneficial, and did it make them better aware of what they taught, and that was also very high. And those are the scores that we're really looking at, was it beneficial, or was it just time to put in? Now, so one thing I do have to say with Huron is the professional development and giving those teachers time to collaborate with one another, there's not a lot of schools that do that, at least once a month anyway. And there are some just different things that teachers had to say, that NWA drives their instruction, and it gives them, you know, time to look back in that learning continuum, you know, that's also very important. And just looking at trend data, what is the trend saying with this data, and I'll discuss that here shortly. And at the middle school, there are some other things that they said about looking at NWA data, you know, looking at certain students in certain areas, and, you know, putting more thought on, you know, what they're going to teach, you know, so it improves instruction. And just looking at that individual scores and seeing what they can do to make their classroom go. And at the high school too, you know, technology, and, you know, again, looking at PSYOPs, they really, the high school really does a nice job with their PSYOP coaches and teaching PSYOP at the high school, not that everybody else doesn't. And then the march, we all got together because part of our advanced ed was the transition between buildings, from building to building, and grade level to grade level, so what we did is we broke out the different groups, so we had the transition, it was kindergarten roundup that day, so we had first grade and second grade, you know, what's the expectation from second grade teachers for first grade? And then we also broke it out, and it's the same thing as from third grade to fourth grade, and fifth grade to sixth grade, and then at the middle school to high school. And then we gave them time to look back at transitioning within their buildings, so what does it look like between second grade and third grade, their expectations, and between sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and at the high school. So that whole march was all about transitioning and what that looked like, and there were a lot of great conversations with those teachers, and for the most part, they were very honest, and it wasn't finger pointing, because I always say that if you're pointing one person, there's three fingers pointing back at you. So they had great conversations. And there's just some, another description on what they thought and how beneficial it And the important one that I thought was their voices, and, you know, most of the teachers, over 80%, said that their voices, they believe, were heard. And there's just some comments about how valuable it was, you know, just time to communicate with other teachers, and they gave some examples of things that could be done between the transition, sending letters home explaining, you know, how to drop off, pick up students, you know, just expectations from teachers, you know, building to building, just a one-page flyer, what that looks like from building to building, or even within the building. And then in April, at the admin table, this whole year, we have been discussing this, Todd Whitaker, the what connect that leaders do differently, and we very greatly appreciate Demi Moon and Mike Radke giving us the opportunity to come and visit and sit in and listen to him. He's an author, and there's a lot of teachers that got a lot of good things out of there, they're just, you know, it's motivational, it was funny, just the opportunity to listen to him, especially at that time of the year, and he was just a great speaker. And then in May, again, you know, they looked at the NWEA, the middle school, they looked at portfolios or professional portfolios, and then at the high school, again, PSYOP, and then school improvement. And there are some different things that teachers said, comments that they had, and again, I think this last one really speaks loud, is that giving the opportunity to have time to do this, and just time to collaborate, even though you're in the same buildings, you get, you know, caught up in your class and day-to-day, just having that reflection. Any questions about the professional development? Right now, the admin table, they're getting together to figure out what that looks like for next year.
I think the statistics that you show are impressive, that staff are getting something out of this time they're spending together. And I don't think you got to go back too many years ago in the struggles that the administrative team was having to put together meaningful development. Looks to me like you've got something that's working, and being recognized by the staff that it's working.
I just, last week, I taught a class over at Huron Community, and I said, I believe we don't allow our teachers across the board, that's just not Huron, across the board, having teachers time to reflect on what they're doing, instead of moving on and that, so I think it's, I think it's wonderful, and I applaud the school board for allowing the teachers that time to get together and collaborate.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you for that report, but I believe you have to stay up there because our next report is the NWEA spring report, also to be presented by Gaye Pickner.
And again, I want to tell you, I'm going to applaud the Huron School District and the Huron School Board for allowing, because it isn't cheap by any means, and you have to figure out, you know, where you want to put all, you know, a lot of your money into. And the NWA or MAP testing, this is one thing compared to the smarter balance that will drive instruction. And again, as you noticed, you know, these last few months of that professional development, that teachers could look at their data, truly look at their data and make instructional decisions and changes on going forward. I will tell you too, that earlier this year, we had Millbank, they came to visit because they are going forward and they are purchasing NWEA for their, I believe it's K-10, they, I'm not sure if they decided if they're going to go to 11th grade, since 11th graders do ACT and smarter balance. So it's just one way that our district and our teachers can drive instruction is with this data. So as I did earlier in the year, we're going to look at the spring NWA data, what we did in Huron, and then compare that to the data across all, the whole world, anybody that takes this test, the RIT scores, we're going to look at the spring results for, you know, 13 to 16, we're going to look at the different years, and then these are different students. And then the last part of it, we're going to look at our students, what they look like in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, or, you know, eighth, ninth, and 10th grade, and so forth. So there's going to be two different parts there, when it's different students, and the different years, and then the same students across. And granted, our kids come and go, but for, you just get that big picture of what that looks like, with that same group of students. So here's our reading data for 2016, what it looks like, and you'll notice in the blue that we have what we scored, and then, and the red is what the spring norm is. And so you will see that, that in first grade here, they scored higher than what the norm spring was. And you can see that all the way across for each year. That's our reading data, and I believe you guys have all of the spreadsheets with all this data, is that correct? Okay. So this is all in the spreadsheets. This is the math data, and, you know, you will see how that math is doing, and you'll look over there at eighth grade, and again, it's the same score that, so our eighth grade math students are doing very well. And then you'll notice at ninth grade, those students that did very well last year as eighth graders are still continuing that trend, so our ninth grade students in math scored higher than the norm RIT score. Here's the language art, and we only do language arts, 3 through 10th grade. There's the science, and as I said earlier this year, that they do not have a norm for science in ninth and 10th grade, and that's due that they did not believe they had enough results to say that this is the, NWA did not set that norm. I'm assuming that going forward after next year, and having a couple years of data, that will change. that will change. So in this slide here, we are looking at the different grades, these are different students, these are not the same students. We'll discuss this difference or the same students next, in these next few slides. But you'll see here at second graders, here's what they were in 2013, here's another group of students in third grade at fourteen, that's fifteen, and then that last one, that kind of purplish color is sixteen. And there is the math, NWA for our district, these are different students across the years. There's the language arts that we have there. And again, these are different students on this one. And now these next slides, these are the same group of students, but going from, like I said, kindergarten through in first grade or, you know, fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth grade and so forth. So these slides here going forward will be the same group of students, but different, different years, different grade levels. There are the math results. And again, they're different years, or different years and the same group of students. And as I said, these students here that did very well this year as they were eighth graders here, ninth graders there and then tenth graders. It's that group of students, it'll be very interesting next year when they're 10th graders. Now we'll have, you know, eighth, ninth, tenth, eighth, ninth and, no, eighth, ninth, tenth, seventh, eighth, ninth and 10th grade. We'll see that data there and see if they are up there, they stay up there. And there's the language arts. Are there any questions with all the data? There is, sometimes you become overwhelmed with all of the data. I did send out sheets where there's the different genders, male, female, there were sheets out there with the different ethnicity. And as you looked at that ethnicity, our Caucasian students were right up there with the other Caucasian students from across the NWA consortium. And the one thing I do want to tell you with the Asian students, our population with Asian students and the Asian students across the NWA consortium may look a little bit different. So just, you know, because of our Asian students, it may, our Asian students may look different than the Asian students, say in Brookings or say in, at U in Vermalion.
So I may ask this often, but I need you to remind me, what is the timeframe that someone has to be in the district or have English language instruction before taking the NWEA tests?
They, everybody takes it because we need that point in time where they start, just to see that growth. So if they're there, that's at the discretion of the teacher, but we strongly encourage that. I mean, if they're there a week, I don't believe that the teachers would, because that's not a fair test. But if they came in, you know, September, have never been here, you know, they need that starting place sometime, so when is that starting place?
And that's different than smarter balance, it has a year time period where they sit out?
That's only for reading, language arts.
So smarter balance has that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and that's only for language arts. So if they come in there in their first year in country, they have one free year or one grace year for language arts, but not for science and not for math.
And that, I guess, kind of leads into the next question I have here, is I noticed that the ninth and 10th grade scores in language arts appear to be lower than our seventh and eighth grade scores. And I was kind of looking at both for this spring, 2016, and in the slide for test scores from 2013 to 2016, the ninth and 10th grade appeared to kind of be consistently a little lower, like the curve took a dip there. Has there been any conversation on what's causing that? Because it does appear to be consistent for the last couple of years. Has there been a conversation about that?
Yes, and I don't want to speak for Mrs. Moon, so I don't know if you want to come up there. I know with the ACT, they were focusing on, like, the ground over is very low, correct, Mrs. Moon? Do, I don't want to speak for her.
Through the process of the data retreat today on day one, I spent a lot of the time, as Mike was working with his faculty for next year, I needed to be in attendance, but I didn't want to be sitting at that table, so I was working on a lot of ninth and 10th grade NWEA data analysis. And one of the things that struck me that I don't know why it didn't dawn on me before, but, you know, earlier this year, when Mrs. Peckner gave you the NWEA report, the board asked for a report of how many of those carryover sophomores, those students who were sophomores did not have enough credits to go on to be juniors, so they remained as sophomores. If we took them out, what would that do to our data? And it didn't, it had a little bit of an impact, but not a huge impact. One of the things I realized today is that when our students are in Hill, which is our newcomer program in ninth grade, we can have anywhere from like twenty-two to twenty-eight of them. When they're in Hill, they take a lower level, like a grade two through five test, because they are new to the country. So when they take the NWEA, they take that test. When they move out of Hill then, they're ninth graders when they're in Hill, all of them are. So when they move out of Hill, they move into 10th grade and we have them take the regular NWEA with everybody else. So they're moving from a grade two through five test to the same test that everybody else is taking that has had, you know, a much longer education for the main part. And what I noticed is of those students who are not reading at grade level, the majority of them were, that were identified as ESL. And later tonight, when we have our board goal sharing report, I'm going to give you guys a little bit more detail in the statistics. But I went through and all of those who are not reading at grade level, I coded as either on an IEP or they were ELL students. And of those that are ELL students that are not reading at grade level, which is going to hurt our reading and our language arts scores, the majority of them are either first or second year out of a newcomer program, either eighth graders and then are out a year or two, or they were in our ninth grade newcomer program and are out a year. So that, you know, if you take twenty-eight and you put them all in sophomore year, if we've only got one hundred and seventy-four, I think was my total, taking the 10th grade NWEA, and thirty of them are only the second year in the country, they're not at grade level yet and they're not at that norm RIT score yet. So I think that is having a huge, you know, I mean, that's twenty percent of our, of our kids taking the test that are in that category. So that's part of it. We also are kind of at a little bit of a peak in that sophomore grade level with our number of students that are on an IEP right now as well too. So definitely not an excuse. And the nice thing is, is there are so many students that are on, that are on an LAP or ELL students who are reading at grade level, so they are progressing and they are getting there. But I just looked at those students who are not reading at grade level and identified which ones were either on an IEP for, you know, for some reason, learning disability or in need of special services or were LAP. And then I broke that down and looked at the number of those students that were just in their first or second year to the country. That helps at all.
That does, thank you.
I think I know the answer to this, but how does it appear that we're able to sustain math? And I'm assuming that some of that has to do with computation math and not just story problems.
Correct.
Because obviously, a good student who's been here two or three years can do computation, even if they've got the language barriers.
Correct, yes.
Because I sat by Mrs. Moon while she was creating the report for this evening and it really does break it down into all the different levels. And so I think it's important while it's being televised that we address the fact that it's unique to the population, but we can show the access scores to show that we still have kids that are growing and exiting the program, which is going to be parallel to what our student body looks like. So you'll get the breakdown on the, on the different categories. Obviously, you will not have access to student names or who's attributed to them, but it's really important in order to understand the complexity of reading.
The other nice thing that the itemized report tells us as a school improvement team, is those students who are not in an IEP and are not on an LAP, but still are not reading at grade level, it gives us the individual names. It also tells us how long they spent taking the test. And Mr. Reiki and I had a little visit today about six or seven ninth and 10th graders who probably should be at the seventy-fifth percentile that came in at about the twentieth or thirtieth. And then you look over on the side and they spent six minutes on the test. Well, we have a, we have an effort initiative going on.
Six minutes out of what's the norm?
Oh, probably thirty to forty-five.
That's what I, yeah.
Yeah.
On a scale.
We did create the honors language arts curriculum for this coming up year and used the NWEA results. And there were some kids that I think did not want to end up in the honors class and so they wanted to make sure that they didn't get there. But we also had a lot more of the opposite, where we had kids that were really working very hard to meet that benchmark NWEA score in order to land themselves in that honors class. So that's, that's encouraging as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for the report. We'll next move on to our business manager's report.
First thing I have tonight is a report on the general fund. We are ninety-two percent of the way through the year. The district has collected thirteen million, six hundred and forty-six thousand, which is eighty-seven percent of our budgeted revenue. Last year at this time, we'd collected twelve million, nine hundred and seventeen thousand, or eighty-seven percent of that budget. So far, we've spent fourteen million, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or ninety percent of the budgeted expenditures. Last year at this time, we'd spent fourteen million, one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, or ninety-one percent of that year's budget. The tennis courts and football field project is underway. We have dirt work and underground drainage systems are some of the first things that they work on. We'll have a construction progress meeting with the architect and a general contractor every two weeks and I will provide you updates at each meeting. So we have a, we have a meeting scheduled in the morning to see what's happening with that project. And on the vocational house bids, we should have awarded some bids for the building project for the students in building trades class for next year, but however, no bids were received. So since no bids were received, we will be trying to negotiate with any interested parties for a building project for next year. So if there's anybody out there that hears this, they're welcome to contact me in the business office and we will see about next year's project.
Any questions for our business manager?
Yeah, I do. So far, does it seem like we're on schedule for the facilities?
I think so far. They've removed a lot of the dirt and hauled a lot of the dirt out and then they're packing it and hauling it back in at the same time, whether it's cooperated for the most part, so far.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. We'll now turn it over to our superintendent for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First thing I'll talk about is the staffing. This type of year, there's a lot of interest on the board as to how are we doing with staffing? And I think the different initiatives on recruitment have been very, very successful. If you look at the results of where we're at at this point, we've got an instructional coach position open and that's open because Mrs. Konecchi gained the job of assistant principal. And so that instructional coach position is open again, that's the one Mrs. Nelson had before she became, she signed to be the curriculum instruction director. So again, that might be a domino effect because we've got a couple of senior teachers with advanced degrees that are, that are at least two of the candidates. So we'll see what else comes in when we close, but we hired that once before and, and so we'll, we'll see in the next week with the closing where Mr. Taplet is with the hiring of an instructional coach. We have a special education teacher position open and I learned today, and I'm going to look up to make sure that I get the right answer here, that we're going to look at two different options to try to fill that. We can fill that with a certified teacher who has no case management, but specializes in the areas that we want taught, or we can fill that with a conventional special ed teacher. And Mrs. Waylander has cleared that with the state, so they're aware of what we're doing. So we're trying to be a bit innovative on what our option is there. There are some coaching positions that are still open and, of course, we're always looking for substitute paraeducators, substitute bus drivers and substitute teachers as well as lunch servers. And those are, I believe I've got most of the listings there for that. Again, a second time to mention the data retreat, which will continue tomorrow. And then with what they're able to share with you tonight, hopefully we will have some things we've learned from that, which can be a part of the discussion when you do your goal setting two weeks from tonight, based on what we've learned from the data we're currently working on. So again, the work session tonight is, this is for the benefit of the public, the board clearly knows this, it's their meeting, but for the benefit of the public, there's a work session tonight, which they'll hear reports from all sixteen administrators on what they've done to carry out the board's goals that they set last summer. And then two weeks later, the board has a work session with the cabinet and sets their goals for next year. And then we spend July communicating that to the different players. And it's actually a system that's been in place now for well over two decades and we're actually presenting on that when we go down to the joint conference between school board administrators in early August. The other thing I want to share is that three of the five effective principal evaluations that, that I need to complete were done in the last week. They're a session that runs between two and a half and three hours. Some of the work is long and laborious, but the principals have, it's just been tremendous to work with. And I wish there was a way to have a whole lot more dialogue without the paperwork and forms that go with it. But I, I will admit this, that the level of discussion, when you're going through the steps of effective principle and the discussion on the students and connecting to what the trends tell us is happening and, and explaining how the principal's perspective is on why learning's taking place or why it's not taking place. And then aligning their goals to, to what they said they wanted to have happen and what they did. It was, it was hard work, but it was, I learned so much about those three schools and I have two left to do and I think those are both scheduled for June twenty-third. And so I'm not a big fan of filling out forms, but, but the effective principal part of it has to be done with integrity. If you're going to expect your principals to do that part with their teachers with integrity. And the principals do that with a lot of teachers compared to the, the five that are directly with me. And then we need to come up with a plan for how we do the assistant principals, either through the principals or through me. All of this is required next year and we tried to put it in place this year in order to, in order to have integrity with what they're doing with the teachers and then the follow-up with the principals to the superintendent. And we believe when we're, when we finish this, we'll be in the first ten to twenty percent that have gone through the whole process, we'll learn a lot from it. And then hopefully next year, we'll be a little, a little better at it. I've enjoyed the time with the principals, it's long, I won't put them on the spot as to whether they enjoyed it or not, I'll just say thank you. Then the, one other thing that I wanted to thank Rex and Kelly and the principals that they're working with, but there's still some warranty work being done on the elementary schools and that's the kind of thing that has to be done in the, in the background. But I'm impressed that the administrators working on that are making sure that what we expected is, is completed before there's a sign-off on warranty. And so there's been a bit of a heating and cooling situation at the Washington Center and I think we've got a food service area concern at the Buchanan Center and those people are very diligent at making sure that we protect the public's interest in that. That's my report.
Thank you. Any questions for our superintendent?
Just a couple of quick ones on the staffing part of it. Maybe you said, how many certified staff positions do we still have open to fill roughly?
We have two.
Two? And have we been getting adequate applicants for open positions?
We've been getting a quality person in each one. That's the great difference from earlier in my career. That's the great difference from earlier in my career. We, we do not spend a lot of time screening down to who we're going to interview. When we get them, the interview process becomes part of the screening, and I'm happy to say that the people who we are agreeing to sign on are, are quality people.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you for your report. We'll now move on to our new business. The first item on the business, a new business is the budget hearing that is held every year. So I'll ask our business manager to comment on it, and then we'll see if there's any public input for the budget hearing.
This is our required by law budget hearing. The preliminary budget was re, was presented to the school board at the first meeting in May. We have the budget hearing then scheduled for tonight. So we have nothing changed since the preliminary budget was introduced in May. I'll just run through what our budget is, and we'll see if there's any public comment. We have budgeted for revenue in the general fund next year, 18 million and $7,000. We're budgeted to spend about 18,440,000 for a deficit of 437,000. In the capital outlay fund, we expect revenue of 3.3 million. We expect to spend 6.2 million. That is the difference of 2,850,000. That is the capital outlay certificates that were issued in this fiscal year that will mostly be spent next fiscal year to finish the construction project underway right now. Special education fund expects revenue of 3.9 million and expenditures of 3.9 million, a small deficit of 45,000. In the pension fund, you might notice that's a bit smaller than it's been in the past because the pension fund is going away. We will collect the 2015 taxes payable in 2016, so the second half of them will go in the old pension fund. And then the, when the new taxes start coming in, the 2016 taxes paid in 2017, there will no longer be any pension fund revenue. And we have a few years to spend what, if we have any left in the pension fund, we have a few years to spend that, which won't be a problem. The building fund is the Huron Arena tax, where we have a 5% tax on each ticket sold into the events in the arena. That generates about 5,000 a year, and we spend it on maintenance in the arena. Right now, tonight, you may notice when you exit, is the gentleman sanding down the arena floor to the bare wood, a process that takes place once every 10 years. That began this afternoon. That's an example of arena maintenance that we could spend this money on, except this particular project costs more than 5,000. It's about a $27,000 makeover. The elementary bond fund, 1.4 million to pay for the elementary bonds. Food service operation is about a 1.5 million dollar operation that is, for the most part, self-sustaining. The enterprise fund is comprised of the concessions operations and the driver's education program. The driver's education program is not designed to turn a profit, it's designed to cover its expenses, and the concession fund is designed to make us about 40,000 a year. So, for the total for all funds, we will have revenue next year in the neighborhood of 28 and a half million, and we'll probably be spending in the neighborhood of 31.9 million. That's an overall summary of the budget.
So I'll first open it up. Is there anybody present for public testimony on the budget? I don't see anybody rushing up to the podium. Are there any questions or comments from the board at this point?
Kelly, just one that I think we might want to highlight a little bit. I understand the capital outlay part, you know, we're using the certificates for the 2.85 million shortfall, but in the general fund, just a little overview, where the deficit 437,000, where that money comes from to make that up?
The deficit and spending in the general fund of about 437,000, first of all, I would expect that we, we would never spend every last penny of the budget. So 1 to 2% of the general fund typically goes unspent. So that should cover a lot of the deficit. And then the rest of it would come from the general fund fund balance, basically the savings account that has, and then between 2 and 3 million in it.
Do we, do we still have a transfer from capital outlay too that's included in that?
Yes, I think there's a transfer scheduled for next year of 300,000.
Is that included in the number we actually see though, or not?
That is in the revenue number for the general fund.
The other sources then, okay. Probably in the other sources, is that where that's listed?
Um, it's coded as yes. It's the other sources.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the budget at this time? Okay, so we're not scheduled for any action now. I believe we will do a final adoption at the next meeting, correct?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Then our next item is science textbooks. To approve the new, the purchase of the new books for grades six through 12, and I guess I'll turn it over to Mr. Neville Sec first to open it up.
Okay, as, as Mrs. Pickner gets up there, just give a little bit of a rundown. We delayed the 612 textbooks until we had a, a meeting which is called for by policy, and there were questions and, and dialogue at that meeting. Also, people certainly have the right to share their concerns or explanations at an open meeting of the school board as well. When we did review the textbooks, we had 10 teachers present, four parents, four administrators, and two students. Policy says that the majority present should be teachers, and so we met that requirement of the policy. Mrs. Pickner will go through the part that is her responsibility. I believe Mr. Musil is here with the perspective of the teachers, and I'm sure that there'll be some discussion by those interested.
Thank you. As I stated, when we adopted our K5, our, this has been a two-year process. We delayed it a year due to the South Dakota Department of Education aligning their new science standards and figuring those out. So we decided we didn't want to get the horse before the cart, so we waited a year. In the meantime, our teachers did look at different science books. We had a rubric that they used to score the different science textbooks that they desired or heard from other science teachers across the state, what they had used. And then we brought the vendors, two to three vendors, in at the middle school and at the high school to discuss their science textbooks and why the Huron School District should purchase their textbooks. And then in the end, the teachers said, you know, these are the ones that we would like. I will tell you, at the middle school with Science Fusion, there are 20 districts across South Dakota that have purchased or will be purchasing the Science Fusion. Brookings, Harrisburg, and Lee Deadwood, they are the, you know, double A schools that have purchased it. We did have Pearson also come in and McGraw-Hill come in, but overall, Science Fusion won out, and I think it's a very great program. At the high school, we had Pearson and Holt McDougall were the winning bid vendors that we will be purchasing textbooks. And again, due to the scoring rubric and the vendors' presentation and our teachers' expertise, those are the two. There's not a lot compared to the middle school or high school testing vend, or textbook vendors, so the choices at the high school are a little bit narrower than the other ones. And as Mr. Neville Sec had said, that we brought this committee together, groups of parents, students, and teachers, and I thought it was a very enlightening meeting and answered a lot of questions. So, are there any questions? And I believe in front of you, you have both of the bids or what it would cost. And Mr. Musil is here to answer any high school questions.
Questions?
We also have Mr. Schmidt at the middle school here, he's also here.
Uh, my first question would be regarding the school board policy, and I certainly appreciate I was involved with the meeting two weeks ago with the four parents, two students, and 10 teachers. I was also involved in the 1990s when we wrote the policy. That's 1990s, not 1890s, except for those that think I look a little old. But, uh, as that policy was developed, I guess, you know, the school board develops policy and the administrative team, of course, decides the procedures to follow that policy. You know, the school board does it, right? The procedures in the policy. The way I would have envisioned it when we wrote that policy though, is that the involvement from the parents and students or the community would be not at the end of the process when the books have already been reviewed, would be at the start of the process so they could give their input prior to looking at textbooks and curriculum. I guess I just kind of wanted to get maybe your thoughts or Terry's thoughts, if, if that's how they interpret the policy, or if they interpret the policy to have the committee at the end.
You know, since I've only been here for three years, I just know that, you know, what was mentioned to me, and, you know, we had that discussion about at the end or at the middle or whatever. And, you know, because our teachers live and breathe this curriculum and know what they need in the standards, we just thought that at the end, after there was a decision to have the parents come and say, here it is. And I, I, I wasn't hearing that when that policy was created, so I don't know what the school board expectations were.
Well, and, and that would just be my concern. I, I, you know, sat in with the group, had some input and some discussion, is, you know, you really didn't have the chance for, especially the people from outside of the science teachers to really look at the textbook. I'm probably the only one that really got that opportunity. So, that, that would be a concern if you have it at the end rather than at the start of the process where you can get that input.
Mr. Neville Sec?
Hey, Kerwin, do you have the policy number?
IIAA.
IIAA.
And I can't tell you when exactly when it was written, but it was sometime in the 90s, 1990s.
Thank you.
IIAA says in the first paragraph, as the governing body of the district, the board is responsible for approving selection of the instructional materials, including textbooks, curriculum standards, outcomes, and significant changes in instructional program, including assessments. The board will rely on professional staff to recommend the selection of instructional materials and to design and implement instructional programs. Of course, this study that will promote the educational goals of the district. The director of instruction will be responsible for implementing procedures regarding curriculum development, textbook adoption, development of curriculum outcomes, timelines, and other pertinent information relating to the adoption will be updated yearly and be on file. The third paragraph, someone we're referencing with the committees, committees established by the director of instruction with majority membership consisting of classroom teachers will be utilized in the selection of curriculum outcomes and textbooks. These advisory committees should seek the advice and gather input from community representatives, including students and parents, and shall work independently in a climate free from undue influence from special interest groups. The director of instruction, following the input from the advisory committee, shall submit the recommendations to administration school board for final approval. My interpretation of that is that the, the classroom teachers utilize the selection process and then go to the advisory committee for advice, input, and reaction. If, if it's a different interpretation than that, then that certainly needs to be discussed, independent of this process, but needs to be discussed as to whether the, as to when and how that takes place in the, in the curriculum cycle. We usually don't get much involvement beyond what the teachers recommend. Hopefully, it's aligned to best practices and what the data shows that we need with the, with the science end of it. I believe, including 99, I think that we had the selection and then we reviewed it. I don't think that we had a committee before the teachers went through the selection process.
When this was written, it was about the time we were working on sex education, actually, at the time. And at that time, if I recall, we did have some input upfront.
Prior, prior to review?
Yeah, and I, I can't recall after that, but that was, that was really what probably prompted the discussion at the time. Health science books and health curriculum.
I don't take exception to that comment at all. Hopefully, I was loud enough that you picked it up on David's microphone, but, okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments or?
It's not here, just, yep.
Thank you for presenting this. I, the, I guess, the, we are looking for action here tonight on approval of the si, grades 6 through 12, science textbooks, so that they can be purchased.
I'd make a motion to approve the science textbooks, 6 through 12.
Second?
There's a motion, a second to approve the science textbooks for grades 6 through 12. Questions, comments, discussion?
The one thing that wasn't brought up was the cost. You may want to relay the cost to the public.
That is in the board packet, but who wants to field that one?
Once again, we were under the cost that was set for us, so. I don't have, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's in the packet there.
You're saying that the cost?
Are we talking about this grand total of 96,353.74?
I think that was the high school.
That's the grand total.
Is there one for middle school?
That's what I'm seeing, appears to be, has both Pearson and Fort Mifflin.
Hardcourt?
Hardcourt. Grand total is 96,353.74.
Yep.
That's not right? You said that came under budget?
Yes. Not by far, but it was under what we were allotted. You're right, yep, that's right.
I'll make clarification just for my own peace of mind. Is the 96, is that broken down into just this half, or is that the entire K-12 package?
It's not the K-12.
That's the 712?
That's correct, or 612.
612, middle school and high school?
Correct.
Okay. And we approved the other previously?
That's correct.
Okay.
How long do, we usually, usually, what's the cycle for these?
Seven years normally, but we went eight this year because of the state of South Dakota deciding where their standards were. So we delayed it a year.
So the motion on the floor is approval of the 6 through 12 science textbooks. Further discussion?
I have some comments on it. I'm not going to vote in favor of the textbooks for a couple of reasons. The evolutionary teaching in it, there's micro-revolution, which I think nobody really has a lot of problem with, that's observable, you know, testable, that kind of explains bacteria, viruses, and things that we see in life that change. Then there's macro-evolution, which is not observable, not testable. And the textbooks do a inconsistent job between the three on how they handle that. And I think when I look at our, at the state standard- And I think when I look at our, at the state standards and just the introduction part of it, you know, all theories are presented in a way that allow teachers to structure an experience around multiple pieces of scientific evidence and competing ideas to allow students to gain an objective discussion. The theories are presented because they have a large body of scientific evidence that support them. These standards were developed in such a manner to encourage students to analyze all forms of scientific evidence and draw their own conclusions. My concern is that on the macro-evolution side, if we get into talking about life from non-life, if we get into talking about punctuated equilibrium, one, you know, taxonomic group developing from another or ape to man evolution, that, that the textbooks do not do an adequate job of the, of talking about the weaknesses in the, in the theory. It certainly talks about the strengths in the theory and why they think that, that the theory might be true. They really don't talk about observation and, you know, testing of those theories very much because they're not able to do that. They're not able to observe or test those things. So that's my concern that the textbooks and the curriculum don't do an adequate job of that. So I'm not going to vote in favor of them, but that's, I wanted to explain that beforehand.
Any other questions or comments? I'm going to ask you a question if you could.
Sure.
Just on that topic of how textbooks treat evolution, was there a difference between the different vendors and how they treat that topic?
Some more evolutionary background than others, but they all have the same topics, they all have the same bits of evidence, they all do the same treatment of the evidence. And as the guide from the State Department that says what we have to have in our curriculum according to meet state standards, we teach you overwhelming evidence, and that's what our textbooks have. All three that we looked at have the overwhelming evidence. They don't put in the one or two bits of information that is contrary to it because of it's so one-sided. And that's how we teach things. If we want to get to that one-sided, that one piece of information, that belongs at the higher academic level than what we have in the high school. We are an introductory biology class, and so that's how we teach it. I think these little criteria that are one or two incidences that conflict with the overall evidence, the overwhelming evidence is a great thesis for somebody getting a PhD, and that's where it belongs.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this topic? Seeing none then, we'll proceed to vote. The motion is on the approval of the science textbooks for grades six through 12. We'll do a roll call vote on this matter and I'll ask the business manager to call the roll.
Hader.
Name.
Van Burcom.
Yes.
Bischoff.
Yes.
Halbke.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Vote is four to one in favor.
And the motion carries. Now move on to our next item of business, item C, handbook introduction. This is the first reading of the handbooks for the year. They are in the board packet. This is again just the first reading, and so anybody has any questions?
The administrators are available. Tried to put this out years and years ago, it would come out in late August and the board didn't really have a chance at it for well over a decade now. We've gone earlier, sometimes it went as early as April, but we found that with the data retreats and the different things that were going on late in the year, it was really, really difficult to have amendments. And so I think the June calendar that we've used the last few years is the, is the best one. You'll, you have it in front of you and you have the administrators here that can tell you if they have changes or if, or if you have specific questions, Mr. Chairman, so you can handle that anywhere that, in a way that you like. And if the board has concerns, they'll be recorded by that administrator and they will meet with me and we'll see if we can address them before you finalize them two weeks from tonight.
I have a question. As I was looking through these, I noticed some have changes highlighted, which makes it easy to see any changes. And some, the ones that don't have any highlights, I assume are basically the same as last year?
My assumption is correct unless an administrator wants to correct that.
I think the only thing that I changed at the.
Need a microphone, just a second, Peggy. Mike, you have a microphone or else we'll send her up there one way or the other.
The only thing at the elementaries, and I think at Madison as well, was just the breakfast lunch program. And that information came from Carol, and so we changed that. And sorry, I did not highlight mine, but that was the only change that I had, and I believe that Washington as well.
I guess I would echo that too. So as, from year to year since we've been doing this for the last few years, I open it up and I'm looking for that top page of changes. So I, the high school did that and I appreciate that. And I scroll through, some of the textbooks or some of the handbooks are longer than others. Those ones are a lot longer, I am not reading all that information again. And so I'm looking for the highlights. Those ones that are short, I can scroll through a few highlights, but if you're a longer, if you're a longer handbook, a summary at the beginning would be very helpful so we can know where we're looking at.
Or even if the new line is just highlighted down as we scroll through, it makes it easy to, to notice the changes.
A question, is there any other handbooks that have major changes that we should be aware of? I guess if we got everybody here that's worked with them.
Anything?
One, one thing that I was noticing, I guess, some of the handbooks are getting, are getting pretty long and I don't see like table of contents or anything in there. So again, I opened it up and I wanted, trying to get an idea of what's in this thing. And I, it becomes, I can't identify a particular organizational pattern or table of contents, something like that, that I could, if I was a student or a parent trying to use this book, how would I get to it? Those that are only five to 10 pages long, obviously that's not very necessary, but some of these are getting 30, 40 pages long. And so I would encourage the administrators to kind of look at that and decide, how long is the handbook? And does it, is it getting to that length or maybe a table of contents would be useful to someone picking it up and reading it?
I have an answer for Mr. Hader's question. I think that probably the most significant change is the one on page 18 of the high school handbook, which is simply a clarification of something that was done mid-year this year in which we held students accountable that if they weren't there when they, when the class started, the doors were locked and then they were escorted to the classroom from an administrator or administrator or their appointee. And I really believe is that as we went away from the incentive program and went to an immediate accountability program, that I think you're going to see that in your data, that that has had a wonderful impact on class starting and children learning at a much more efficient manner. So I think that's major. It happened in the middle of the year, Mr. Hader, but it's on page 18.
Page 18, thank you.
Any other comments for our first reading on the handbooks? Seeing none, these will appear in two weeks for second reading. Next item on the agenda is banking services for two-year period beginning July 1, 2016. And I'll ask our business manager to comment on this.
Okay. For the last long time, I don't know, more than 10 years, we've been asking for banking services proposals for two-year periods. So this is the start of a new two-year period on July 1st. So I sent out the letter to the local banks and credit unions and I received three responses, which are in the board packet. The proposals are all very similar for what they would provide. They provide us with our banking services for our five bank accounts that we have and they provide everything you might say, free of charge. We don't pay any service fees of any type and they will provide the deposit slips. We have to go out and buy check blanks, which has always been the case because we have special check blanks that work with school accounting software and we're able to get them done at a print shop at a reasonable price. So what kind of what it has boiled down to again this year is the amount of interest that they will pay on the funds that are on deposit. You will see we have three proposals. First National Bank of South Dakota, which is where we're at right now, offering 0.75 percent. They would be willing to adjust that on July 1, 2017, either up or down based on a treasury market. The American Bank and Trust, offering 1.06 percent. And Farmers and Merchants Bank of the First National Bank, offering 1.16 percent. And that is, the recommendation is to take the highest interest rate offered. I might also note that the, this, the, as you're, I think all well aware, the school scholarships accounts are accounted for at the Huron Area Education Federal Credit Union because they do a lot of the work behind the scenes with the high school. We don't ever move those, that account around.
Mr. Hader? I really didn't have a question, I was just going to make a motion that, that we approve the recommendation of the business manager to, for a two-year time period with Farmers and Merchants First and First National Bank.
I would second that. There's a motion, a second to award banking services to Farmers and Merchants branch of First National Bank for a two-year period beginning July 1, 2016. I have a question, how long have we been at American Bank and Trust?
We are currently at First National Bank. That was the first time with them since I've been here, just for two years.
We were at American Bank and Trust before then.
Before then, then we moved to First National two years ago.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote on the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. That motion carries. Our next item of new business is a request to modify the school's start day and stop times at the Washington 405 Center to coincide with Buchanan K-1 and Madison 23 centers.
I can offer a bit of history. The board officers asked that this not be in the consent because it would allow for some good discussion. The Washington Center, when it was a K-5 building with the little, little ones, purposely started their school day earlier so they could get out earlier because of its proximity to the high school and, and, and traffic from the high school. What we've discovered in the, now that we have all the buildings built and we've got the 405 center together is that we have parents that are on a routine of when to pick up students and when to drop them off. And we think it's a little bit confusing to try to remember who's on what start time compared to the other one. That when the other elementary centers are all on the same start time, they get their delivery schedule down, their pickup schedule down, they can make plans with daycare, et cetera. And so nothing has to be in concrete, but the superintendent agrees with, with Mrs. Foss that we would like to put the times together so that the K-1, the 23 and the 45 all have universal start and ending times. The other option we considered was a five-minute stagger moving the 23 center so that it was partly in between. Well, that's okay if that fits where people live, but if it doesn't fit where people live because of where they drop off their first one and where they might wind up at work, it actually could be very counterproductive because people could be 10 minutes earlier at one and, and later at the other one while they're trying to work out. So I think our, our best plan is to, is to move the Washington start and end time to be identical to Buchanan and Madison. And I don't have that in front of me, so the universal start time is 8:15. And dismissal of 3:10.
When's high school get out?
The high school still gets out at 3:15, so.
What time does the Washington 405 center start currently? So they'll delay 15 minutes during the rest of the schools.
It's a 10-minute wait.
10 minutes, what did I say?
10-minute wait. And, and the traffic is still there, but it's not our tiniest, tiniest kids.
Okay. Is there enough time that they can drop their kid off earlier? Do they have 15-minute window, 10-minute window?
I think there's a microphone back there and then Mike will simply switch the cameras onto you so we don't have to have you come back and forth.
The school opens at 7:30 and so, yep, even though it, school starts at 8:15, the doors open at 7:30. Two other concerns that we have is, and Rex and I have been talking about this, the bus right now drops the kiddos off at about 7:50, 7:55. When the kids come in to eat breakfast, they don't have enough time when school starts at 8:05 because there's four buses that drop off the kids, so that could be 200 kids. So the kids are always, we're always hurrying them through the cafeteria. Also, when they're dismissed at 3 o'clock, they sit on the bus for about 20 minutes over at the transfer waiting for the other buses to get there so that in the summer, it's, they, they're sitting on buses that are very hot. So that was another concern of mine and Rex's. So, you know, it's not just, we want to make sure that all the schools are at 8:15. There are other concerns that we had starting at 8:05. So this is for the betterment of the kids.
Thank you.
Mr. President, this is a common sense issue, I'd move approval.
There's a motion, a second to modify the school's start day and stop times at the Washington 405 Center to coincide with the Buchanan K-1 and Madison 23 centers. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. That motion carries.
I think it's worthy, if I could have just a second. We start and stop all these, but the middle school receives thousands of kids each day and exchanges the buses. And the middle school administrators and their staff, they take them all from those schools, get them on the buses and send them home. They come from home, they get them on the buses and send. And that's, that's a supervision issue which the rest of us should never forget that lands on the middle school and Mr. Sawell every day, so I wanted to thank them publicly.
Thank you. We'll now move on to old business, item A.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I believe we have that one item from the consent agenda.
I had that listed as D under old business.
Oh, you moved it to old business, okay.
Sorry. We'll get there, thank you. Item, so A under old business, policy G-C-B-D dash three, professional staff leaves and absences. This is a second reading and action.
It is a very small edit, which the HEA approved a few months ago because our auditors did not want us paying out in August for unused wellness benefits. So the payout is in June and the policy simply articulates what we changed to do this year.
I would move approval.
Second?
There's a motion, a second to approve the amendment to policy G-C-B-D dash three. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. That motion carries. And I move on to item B under old business on advanced ed. And I'll ask Mr. Neville to comment on this.
Thank you. We have a longstanding accreditation with what used to be North Central. And then when they, North Central, which is the area of Chicago and the greater Midwest, when it joined with the southeast region, it became, I believe, 35 states. And during that time, we have become more and more disconnected at the K-8 level and with us being in focus status, everything we do at K-8 is duplicate to also do with advanced ed. In the meantime, the costs have considered to accelerate far beyond inflation. And though we've tried to discuss with them the changes in policy, which have cost us more money and we've projected yet another significant increase in cost, the administrative team is together in supporting the superintendent's recommendation that we go back to high school only. Those that are staying in it in South Dakota, the large schools are, they're either getting out of it completely or they're going back to high school only. And with our high school not in the focus status, so we would like. so we, we would like to at least evaluate whether we should stay in that a few years rather than just drop everything completely. So we'd like to continue the high school accreditation, which has gone on since nineteen oh eight, and, and go back away from the middle school and elementaries, which we've added in the last twenty years. And hopefully, we've been keeping you involved in that discussion before we got to this point.
Any discussion or action on that issue?
I would make a motion to approve our superintendent's recommendation.
So there's a motion and a second to discontinue our accreditation with advanced ed for grades K through eight and keep it only for the high school.
That's my motion.
That's the motion. Any further discussion on that motion? I guess I would just comment, I guess something I didn't realize is that I thought that our advanced ed was in place of our state accreditation, which I just learned recently, that's not actually accurate. The state requires us to get accredited through them anyway.
During the years that you were in high school, that was a huge benefit of being on it. When I served on the state NCA committee, we would review all of the information that came in to the state committee, and we'd let the Department of Ed know that these people are accredited, and they'd send someone out for a one-day compliance review to look at your fire drill records and those types of things, and then, and then that was the entire process. Over the years, they have dissolved into two completely different entities.
So we will still remain accredited even after this?
It will be a fully accredited.
It will be still fully accredited.
School with the Department of Education in South Dakota.
Don't want anybody to get that wrong.
Exactly.
And so the, and the advanced ed has always been accreditation above and beyond state records. And so we're no longer going to pay for the extra K through eight when it doesn't provide us enough benefit. That's, that's the feeling I'm getting from this, so. Any other discussion on the motion?
Any administrators, if I spoke differently than what we've looked at for several weeks?
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote on the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. That motion carries. Item C, vocational house bids. I'll ask our business manager to comment on this one.
Oh, as I already mentioned in my report, we advertised quite a bid, I thought, over a four to five week period to try and find somebody that would like the Buildings Trades Class to build a house for them next school year. We were unsuccessful so far, so we will keep our ears and eyes open and try and find somebody that's willing to have the class do that. But right now, we don't have anybody.
So no action in this at this time, correct?
No, no action. What we have done in the past when the situation arises is you allow the business manager to get somebody under contract that shows interest. The first person to show interest, we try and contract with them.
Okay. Any other questions about this issue? Seeing none then, we will move on then to our last item of business, the ratification of the classified salary negotiations. That was removed from the consent agenda. Who wants to comment? Or I guess I'll entertain a motion to ratify them.
So moved.
Motion is second to ratify the classified salary negotiations. Do you have any comments?
I simply moved it, asked, requested to move it because I got a spouse that's classified employee, so I will abstain from the vote.
That's what I thought. So, so we will do a roll call vote on this one so we can note any abstentions necessary.
All right, if I still made the motion?
No, it's not.
I'm the same vote as John.
Okay, so we're going to withdraw that one.
I will make the motion. I was on the negotiations committee. I'll make that motion.
Okay, so now the minutes can reflect that Mr. Hader made the motion, as was seconded by Mr. Bischoff, to ratify the classified salary negotiations. Again, any further discussion on this point?
Just clarify that they followed the pattern of the teacher negotiations and went with a flat dollar amount that, it's in the packet, but for the benefit of the public, a flat dollar amount that reflected a five percent overall. The teachers at about twelve percent. We tried to stay in line with what other districts were, were trying to do on the classified side. Ours was a little bit lighter than others, but I think we had probably done better in the last couple of years. So I think the overall package is, is been put together. Karen, are you comfortable with that as a general overview to the public?
Okay. Any further discussion on this topic? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion to ratify the salary, classified salary negotiations, say yes. The opposed say no. The business manager can call the roll.
Hader.
Yes.
Van Burcom.
Abstain.
Bischoff.
Yes.
Halbkat.
Abstain.
Wheeler.
Yes.
The motion passed with three in favor and two abstentions.
The motion carries, and that is the end of our business agenda for today. Shortly after this, we'll go into a recess and then come back into session for a goals report work session. There'll be no action at that time. So I'll entertain a motion right now to go into recess, and we'll come back in in about ten minutes.
I don't think we need a motion for recess. You can just put us in, I believe.
Okay, then we, if there's no objection, we are in recess.